Good evening. Welcome to the 2013 SAC City City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the SAC County Young Professionals. My name is Lance Jenkins and I'm the SAC County YP President. My co-moderator at the table is Zach Williams and he is the SAC County YP Vice President. As young professionals, we've prepared 10 questions for the candidates to answer. These questions were prepared in secret and have not been shared with any of the candidates prior to tonight. The order of the candidates' responses this evening were determined randomly by a number out of a hat. The order in which they pulled the number was determined by a candidate consensus. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the first five questions and 90 seconds to answer each question thereafter. While answering, candidates will be notified when they have 30 seconds left and 10 seconds left. We will begin the forum by inviting each candidate to present a 60-second introductory statement. Immediately following the forum tonight, we'd like to invite the public to join us out in the lobby for some refreshments and to get a little one-on-one time with the candidates. Do any of the candidates have any last-minute questions? Okay. We'll start it off with Bruce then.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Carrier. Thank you to the young professionals for hosting this and to each of you for being here tonight. As a fourth-generation resident of SAC City, I am humbled and honored at the thought that I might be considered as one to become your voice on the city council. After graduation from SAC City High School, I attended Luther College where I earned degrees in biochemistry and music, and then earned graduate degrees in music performance from the University of Iowa. My training in science taught me that the bridges that unite masses are what define any organization. My training as a musician taught me that listening is about most important. My time spent occurring from my aging appearance here with Lorraine taught me that actions are far more important than words. If elected to the council, I promise that I will work tirelessly to build bridges to unite the community and move to the future, listening to each of you and leading with actions and not just words.
My name is Susan McColl. I grew up on a farm southeast of town. My parents were Gene and Vincent Arndt. I graduated from SAC High School and was married at the Methodist Church here in town. I am married to Alan McColl and we have five children and nine grandchildren. We lived for about two years on Elm Avenue before moving away. I was appointed to planning and zoning on August 13, 2012. I am currently co-president of Watani. I belong to the Methodist Church and am a member of the Finance Committee and also am on the Activities Committee of the circle that I belong to.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight as well and thank you to the young professionals for putting on the forum. My name is Shirley Phillips. Most of you know me. I actually was born and raised in SAC County and have been in SAC City for over 40 years. My husband and I own a small business, so I've always been in business in the community. We have our children here, raise them in the school district, and also my grandchildren were or are born and raised here too. So it's nice to be a fourth-generation Phillips in the community. For the last 25 years, I've served as the County Economic Development Director. I just recently took a job as Executive Director of Western Hour Tourism Region, which is a 36-county area. I am currently working out of my home, so I'm here in SAC City. So I would be pleased to represent all of you in the city council.
Good evening. My name is Tom McGinty. I lived in SAC City for approximately 40 years. I was in law enforcement, led a share of my life, I'd say for 37 years. I have married to Audrey, sitting back there. I have three children, two of whom have graduated from SAC City and two grandchildren who are currently in elementary school. I guess my purpose for being on the council is to hopefully be the Dolly Thomas of what should be as far as looking at the different things that are coming up on the agenda, the finances and so forth. Again, I want to thank everybody here for allowing us to be here tonight and that is about all.
My dad always said, "Don't practice on the audience," so I'm relieved to know that I know the answers to this question. My name is Denise Blauabsele. I graduated from SAC High in 1969, started at Iowa State University 10 days later, graduated the summer of 1972, and started teaching YEP that week. I went into the private sector in 1986 and purchased a manufacturers' rep agency in 1990. That agency generated millions of dollars in revenue to our vendors every year. It was sustainable income. As a commissioned staff, that is extremely important. In 2007, I sold my business, sold my house, married Blauabsele, and moved back to town. I am running for student -- or for a city council because I believe the life experiences that I have had will bring a new attitude to SAC City. Thank you. I will appreciate your vote.
All right. We'll start with the first five 60-second questions. First question, this is for Susan. Why did you decide to run for city council?
I decided to run for city council because I want to be a part of the future of SAC City. I know that we have a lot of challenges to deal with, but I think they are -- they can be dealt with reasonably and to the benefit of everyone.
I thought long and hard about running for the city council. One of the things that inspired me to run was the fact that we have some grants and stuff that are outstanding, such as our facade grant, which was a half a million dollar project that we brought to SAC City. There's a number of infrastructure improvements that we need to see in our community and also to stimulate economic development. After 25 years, I've been able to help not only start up businesses, expand existing businesses, but also transition those. So it's exciting time for us. With Highway 20, a four-lane finally passed SAC City, our community is positioned to grow and that's what we need to do. We need to grow and prosper. We need to be able to attract younger people to our community so that we have a lively workforce. That's something that we are short in Iowa. We're short on human capital and talent and we need to make our community the type of place where they want to come and live, work, and raise their family.
Our purpose for running for council is, number one, trying to bring an efficient government to SAC City, to try to stay within our budget, and to hopefully bring all the amenities and whatever to the city that we need. We have an infrastructure problem, which everyone knows, and hopefully sometime that will be resolved in a reasonable manner. SAC City has been my home for over 40 years and I'd really like to make sure that it stays the place it is and also, you know, I was back in the days when, '73 when I came and this, at that time with its glory days, our population has declined. I would really like to do anything and everything that we can do to try to gain our population back, to possibly bring in new industry, and to keep the taxes as reasonable as possible and to do as much for our infrastructure and for the economy and for SAC City as possible.
I decided to run for the city council because I believe there should be a representation from the business sector of SAC City on the council. It is paramount to our success and our environment in the downtown district to keep our community lively, prosperous, and looking for a future for those that are working there currently but also for those that have graduated from SAC County. And to have an opportunity to sustain our community and keep people here. I was not handpicked. I had to really, really consider this before I went ahead because I am risking some things by being vocal in the community and I understand that. But I also think that young people have to be heard. The community has to be listened to when they address the city council and the city council has to respect every opinion within the community.
That's done.
I love SAC City. I believe in SAC City. And that's what propelled me to run for city council. Sorry. Never mind, buzzers should not be on the phone. That's probably not why I chose me to run for city council. Nevertheless, I believe that SAC City has a vibrant future ahead of it. I would love to be a part of the team that connects where we are now to what is a future that generations ahead can say we are really a wonderful community. The decision was not easy, but I have wanted to run for council and be more involved in government for a long time. Time with my parents precluded doing things like running for city council. Along with the sadness of their party comes the joy of being able to use my time, my talents, and my energy to help further the future of the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. The next question, we'll start with Shirley. What do you feel are your qualifications to be a city council member?
Qualifications? Let's see. I've probably been to hundreds of city council meetings in the last 40 years, not only through my job in the last 25 but also because my husband was on the city council, my father was on the city council before that. I know a lot about city finance. I certainly understand all the agencies, organizations, and state representatives that affect a city's growth. I know a lot of the surrounding communities. I know the leadership there. I also know how and where to find the grants and the assistance that we need to grow as a community. I certainly probably understand more about economic development than anybody in the room, so I know what they're talking for our communities. It's taken me a long time to establish a network of communications and connections throughout the state, but I would be able to use all of those connections to help our city grow and prosper.
Well, my purpose and why I feel I should be on the city council, I've become extremely involved with planning and zoning. It made me have a really deep interest in SAC City and actually the government itself. During that time, we've made some changes and what have you, but it seemed like common sense hasn't been at times a major factor within the council and hopefully I can bring some common sense and be a mediator in many of the items that go on to hopefully build a consensus with other council people and come up with some really good decisions and I feel that I will be able to do that. And I am really looking forward to being on the city council and I really appreciate your support.
Qualifications? I think mine is a diversity of experiences. In my former life, I had to meet CEOs and buyers and was able to listen to them and answer the questions but also help them reach good conclusions. And I think that is part of what has to be done within a community, is not only listen to the concerns but also help direct people to realize that, you know, through questioning, what is good for the community. I have worked in the last two years to bring two significant projects here within the community, one meaning the Freedom Rock, which was recently dedicated, and also the facade grant. I don't know any of the answers. I know you know I don't, but I know where to find them and I will do my best for you.
My regular job, which, to be honest, I should be at tonight directing a dress rehearsal for Young Frankenstein, and I thank the people who are able to take it over and enable me to be here, is dealing with consensus. Two months ago, I took a group of people who'd never seen each other. Next week, they will go onstage and I think we'll be pretty darn awesome. I believe that as we work together, we can build a future for the community. My experience is getting people to work together, buy into a dream, and move forward. I've worked with nonprofits for nearly 25 years. Through them, we have always had balanced budgets. I understand the importance of not only big expenditures but small expenditures. I understand the concept of city government and working on planning and zoning and would like to bring my creativity and imagination in city council.
My qualifications are, we have owned and operated a greenhouse, floral shop, gift shop, and two other gift shops in three different towns. This involved a lot of planning and being prepared to answer all the questions and answers that needed to be answered with that. I also, for 16 years, worked at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, dealing with 75 professors, instructors, students, student workers, and it really is very challenging from the fact is that not everybody is in agreement and sometimes you are a placemaker as to say, "Okay, we gotta meet this deadline and we have to have a answer."
That's done. All right. Moving on to question number three. Let's start with Tom. What do you think makes SAC City outstanding? What do you think makes SAC City outstanding?
Well, number one, it's the people. The people who have stayed in SAC City, that work in SAC City and actually have retired in SAC City have been a real asset to the community. They've been involved in all our activities, different organizations. Again, SAC City has been my home for 40 years, so I have a feeling that hopefully I'll be here another 40, which I'm being pretty optimistic. In that particular time, I expect to see the town grow, have a lot more activities going on, which we have right now. We have some nice facilities and I'm really anxious to see the future and again, I really
What do I think about, or for SAC City? SAC City right now may be in a state of flux and struggles, but I am optimistic that there are opportunities for our youth and our existing business owners to thrive. And I think part of that is because of our new access to Highway 20. We will be bringing in our visitors, I believe, to see the Freedom Rock, which will generate lots of new out-of-city revenue to our community. This revenue may be just a tank of gas, but if there's a thousand tanks of gas, it could be, you know, phenomenal, phenomenal income to SAC City as a community. And we can just build on those opportunities with our facade grant and make it an incredible place to live.
Education, healthcare, schools, people, above all the people. The people of SAC City are wonderful. They'll smile at you when they're happy, they'll smile at you maybe when they're not happy, but they will work together and be the future of the town. One of the other great things that's outstanding about SAC City is its greatest history. I am really fascinated by the history and I told myself I wouldn't talk about history tonight, but we have great things like the facade project that's improving historic downtown, the Chitahma Park Historic District, which will soon be on the National Register of Historic Places. I have the privilege of writing and defending that grant a couple of weeks ago. And finally, SAC City is a place that can believe in itself and grow if we work together.
I think the people are very important. We have had a lot of people that grew up around here and for one reason or another moved away and then later on returned, and that has been a great advantage for SAC City. We have the hospital, we have doctors' offices here, and that again is very important for anyone that is returning here to live. You also have things for young children and you also have things for adults. You also have the airport, which is the only one in the county, so we have a lot of things that are going on for SAC City.
What makes SAC City outstanding? All of what they have mentioned here, and apparently it's a really great planning and zoning commission. I spent seven and a half years on that myself. Anyway, we have amenities for our citizens of all ages, which is extremely important, from our senior citizens, citizens all the way down to our children, and that's the thing that we need to actually draw more and more people to our community. Our location is one that is an asset and that's because finally, after 25 years, we have a four-lane highway within 30 miles of our community. That will stimulate growth. We've already had people that have searched and researched this area for potential businesses. We have, it's the people and the ideas and the people that are inspired by an idea and pursue it and get other people on board to help see that idea to fruition that's important here. So once again, we are an outstanding community, look at the surrounding area with the like and everything. We're in a really good spot for growth.
Okay. The next question, we'll start with Denise. To contrast that last question, what do you think needs improvement in SAC City?
What do I think needs improvement? Because of visiting and sitting in on several city council meetings, I think being open to suggestions needs to be improved. I think that the attitude of our city council needs to be one of openness where our youth can come in, and by our youth, I mean our young professionals and our young people who are trying to start businesses here, raise a family here, build a home here, and they, in conversations with me, have indicated that they feel that many times they are not listened to, they are not accepted as far as their concerns, and yes, this is a great place to retire, but we need to bring people in here that are going to live for a long time and promote our community.
It's no secret that SAC City has an infrastructure crisis. Roads, water pipes, sewers, storm sewers, they're not getting any more useful like some of the rest of us, but they won't improve unless we can formulate a plan to pay for them in a manner that will not drive people out with undue assessments nor maximize the city planning capacity. We have to find a way to, find a way to fund it and then plan for it over a period of years so that we can begin to renew what our forefathers did over 100 years ago. Other things that need improvement, we need to learn to work together better. The community is a bit divided and we have to be able to say we want to work for the better and have the whole town and not just one facet thereof.
Could you repeat that for me, please?
Yes. To contrast the last question, what do you think needs improvement in SAC City?
The people need to work together. Not everyone is going to agree with their neighbor. You just have to meet in the middle of the ground and hopefully a solution will work for everyone. The other thing is very true. Our streets, our water, and our sewer lines are old, but there again, you need to work so you are not driving people out of town or making it a burden on the people that
As mentioned before, yes, our infrastructure is aging. We're 158 years old. All across the nation, our infrastructure needs to be repaired. We know that we have some issues here in SAC City that need to be addressed. One of the great things I see is that we're finally doing something to Main Street, Old Highway 20, that we're making it look better. Transitioning our businesses is important to all of us. It's also important that we make our community as appealing in appearance as we can. As I travel through 36 counties and take a look at some of the communities that I pass through, I think, wow, this is really a cool community. Everything is nice, clean, tidy, everything's fixed up, they've got nice sidewalk streets, whatever. We can do this as well. I checked today and we received somewhere between $175,000 and $200,000 a year in local option sales tax that's supposed to be used as capital improvement projects. I'd like to see some of that money go toward some of these improvements.
Well, I think everyone's consensus is the infrastructure. I think that's going to be a very important issue and it shows that everything is getting old and wearing out. Our streets are ill-repaired. The only bonus we have is there's a lot of improvements in the residential areas in town. If you notice a deciding going up, new facades being put up on the main street, that would be quite an improvement. But the biggest thing that we need is everybody to work together and try to beautify the community somewhat. We have places that have just went overboard, making your place beautiful and other people just ignore it. We need to find some sort of a consensus that gets everyone involved to make SAC City a better place and a more attractive place to come to and live. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the last 60-second question. Start with Bruce. During your campaign, what issues have you discovered are most important to the people in the community?
Talking to people, there's a sense of wanting to believe in a positive future. We want to believe that we have leaders who will let us improve infrastructure. We want to believe that we have leaders who will allow vacant properties to disappear. It was thrilling to see finally, MapChew Store become a non-ICE store. As mentioned, it's great to see homeowners cleaning up their homes. People are concerned about budgets, they're concerned about taxes. The last six years has been a significant decrease of city property tax, but people would like to see it somewhat lower unless it's going to pay for some general obligation debt to help infrastructure. I think the biggest thing they're concerned about is making sure that the future will be bright and we work together to see it.
As I've visited with people, one of the questions they asked was, "What about the streets? How are we going to pay for those?" "I can't afford to pay for this at the present price that was indicated earlier." Or, you know, "Am I going to have to leave town?" If you lose people over the price that was originally quoted for the cost of repairing the streets, we've really gained nothing. We need to find a way to make this reasonable so everybody, so we can have streets, water, sewers, and not lose people but gain population.
Some of the issues that I'm facing people, people continue to talk to me about jobs. We need jobs and we need businesses here. I can tell you, if you read my information in the newspaper, that we have a between 3% to 4% unemployment in the whole area, not just here in SAC County, but in the whole area. We are, we need to entice some more human capital here. That's one of our biggest necessities. We need more people to move here so that we have it for jobs. You look on the downed street and all of our business people You look at the downtown street and all of our business people are aging, which is unfortunate. But we need to be able to transition younger people into those positions. I think people are relatively concerned that we do need to keep our appearance up. Naturally, streets is a big issue. There hasn't been a major street program in this community, I don't think, since 1993. In fact, I was absolutely thrilled to see the curbs repaired downtown because they were cut away in 1993. That's 30 years ago, folks. We can do better than that.
Many of the people that I talked to were really concerned about the tax base, the cost of repairing our infrastructure. And on the other hand, some of our business people in town are really concerned about the declining population, actually the lack of customers. I think that if we continue to work at trying to get businesses into town, even small and large, other businesses, they will be quite concerned that they may not have a business. I really believe that the ones that I've talked to are really the most concerned about paying taxes. I think that's a very important thing to everyone, including myself. And again, it's been reiterated, the city taxes have gone down over the last eight years. But on the other hand, our hope is, if I get on the council, to not raise them, to actually try to keep them at that level and still provide the services that's required within the community. So I think that the people I've talked to feel that that's the proper thing to do. Thank you.
In talking with the community, part of what I hear is that the concern over the infrastructure, which has been discussed here frequently. However, what their big concern was paying for research and then not making the decision to do something. So there is a significant amount of people that understand that it might have to be a general, an assessment or a general obligation box. That's a given. It's unrealistic to think that you can make a tough decision and not know that half the people in the community think you're wrong. But you have to be willing to listen to the information and then that information make the best decision for the community as a whole. And this is going to cost us money. Nothing happens for free. And you cannot please everybody and doing nothing places nobody.
Okay, the candidates will have 90 seconds to answer the remaining five questions. Question six, we'll start with Susan. What is your opinion of our current city leadership?
I think our current city leadership has done a good job. The current tax base was, is down to about 25%. But with that, you know, you're thinking, oh, 25%? Well, we'd like to see it go lower. But the good thing about that is your property values are up. So when you go to sell your property, maybe you're going to get more money for it. From that standpoint, I think basically they have, they have done a good job.
I'm encouraged by the enthusiasm that our mayor has shown in our community and some of the things that she stepped up to the plate to do personally to keep this community in good shape. I've sat through many, many council meetings where there is contention and indecision about a project. There are things that we need to move ahead and do in our community if we are going to continue to grow and raise our assessed valuation so we can all share in the cost of any of the improvements that we have. There are a number of things that could be improved. There's certainly open communication would be great. I think that perhaps if some of the leadership were more involved in some of the different organizations and stuff, they could see a different pathway for our community.
I believe currently that the mayor and our city council has done a really good job. I know there've been controversies over different issues. Again, in any type of government, whether it be city, state, or federal, you're going to have conflicts. You're going to have people on one side or the other saying that they want this and they want that, the whole thing. The council has been working to some point to try to come to the middle and meet some of these problems. Again, some of the controversies that's happened, probably is good. There's times we just don't agree with everybody and you like the little bubble head in the back of the car and say, yes, we're going to do that. I think that discussion and sometimes even a little argument probably isn't all bad as long as the end result comes out to positive results, which I think basically the majority of the decisions that have been made with the city have been to that effect. Thank you.
I think our mayor has directed our council on some very significant things and brought some great things to Sac City. She should be commended about the removal of Matt Schuster, which has taken, I think, over 15 years. However, there are disappointments that I have with our city leadership in that many times, and this has been my observation, they are not there for significant opportunities in our community. I'm always thrilled with the people that are in attendance, for instance, at the dedication to the Freedom Rock. And I'm saddened greatly when I do not see our city leaders in attendance. I think they should be the forerunners of improvement for Sac City. I think they should be carrying the ball for our citizens and I do not think that it should have to be independent citizens that are leading them. I find that to be extremely backwards, if you will. So if I am on the city council with other members, I intend to lead Sac City into the new decades with new ideas and new opportunities and I will source as much information for the benefit of Sac City as I can. Thank you.
Working in a church, there's an old joke, says that every pastor makes everyone in the congregation happy, some by coming and some by going. I think the same could be said for every city council member and every city leader. I think the city council has done some remarkable things. Lowering the tax would be wonderful. It is wonderful. Getting Matt Schuster down has been great. New curb and gutter downtown is great. A street project on Main Street was wonderful. I was disappointed that we spent more than $300,000 on a street project that wasn't. I wish, watching a city council meeting, sometimes I wish that the councilors would have taken a little more time to talk to one another. They listened to public input pretty well, but didn't necessarily discuss the matters in the public meeting. I honestly believe that there was a consensus with that council to move forward with the street project if they had agreed on a financing problem first. And if elected to the council, that would be one thing I would propose, is finding a method of funding infrastructure and then coming to the project. I think that the city leaders are doing a great job and I think that we have the opportunity to improve that in the future.
Okay, moving on to question number seven, and then we'll start with Shirley. Members of our group feel that there is a lack of housing development in our community that may discourage people from building or relocating here. How could this be addressed?
And I think you're right. I think there is a lack of housing opportunities here. There are subdivision ordinances out there where we could actually do that. There's also a number of dilapidated properties around the community. A lot of our smaller communities are even removing these older homes that have deteriorated and opening up the lots for building as well. So as you look around the community, you can probably spot where there's an opportunity, maybe put a home. And certainly, there are a number of opportunities where you could get rid of the dilapidated homes and maybe have a spot. Putting up a housing development, you can look in all the communities as you drive through, and I cannot believe how some of these smaller communities have put themselves on the line to put up a housing development and how they have grown. It's absolutely amazing. I asked the city poll sting the other day how they were doing when they started their housing development. Yes, they bothered, a huge amount, $850,000, but they have some significant homes that have added to their community's evaluation. You could look at smaller communities like Arcadia, look at their housing development. You could look at much larger communities. It's absolutely amazing to me that other communities can do this and we do not.
Yeah, members of our group feel that there is a lack of housing development in our community that may discourage people from building or relocating here. How could this be addressed?
Well, so far, part of that has been addressed by the planning and zoning. In the last year, we have changed some of the rules and the council has been along with it as far as building such a place. They've reduced, they've raised the number from housing development, the requirement from three, I believe, to eight. They've said that the city will negotiate on some of the costs of the infrastructure going into the housing development. And also that the water will be brought to the, all the services at city have to be brought to the housing development, just as REC or the electric companies, the gas company, the cable companies, if they are franchised, they bring them to the community, bring them to the house and put them in that subdivision. And I think that if we can find a suitable place and find some people that are willing to start a subdivision, build a spec house, maybe that would mushroom into some other building in that property. So part of that has been addressed by planning and zoning. It's just hopefully it will get kicked into gear and people will pay attention and come in and maybe take advantage of the situation.
Realizing that this is a problem in Sac City, I actually asked some young professionals as well as some students that have graduated from here, what would motivate them to stay in Sac City? Young professionals are graduating with an immense amount of college debt. They are not looking for a three-bedroom, little picket fence around the house. They are looking for affordable housing that if we look up, we see, we could see historical buildings that have a second story that could be renovated to provide less than 100 square feet apartments where our young professionals could afford to move here, pay off their college debt, spend money here, maybe find a boyfriend or girlfriend here and then move into that ideal location with a picket fence and three bedrooms. But initially, our youth are looking for things differently than when we graduated. They have been going to colleges where they are sharing a common room with three bedrooms or four bedrooms and they are used to working out of their homes. They're used to working out of their bedrooms. They go to coffee shops, they go to bookshops, and then they commute to their jobs. We have access to Highway 20 and they can get to Des Moines or Omaha and then to wherever their parent corporation is located and can do their jobs in Sac City.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Indeed, there is a shortage of housing in Sac City. This afternoon, I talked to one of the realtors in town and there are between 20 and 22 houses for sale. That's not very many. If we're going to attract industry into town, if we want to bring in a company that has 30 workers, we don't have housing for them. So we do have to find a way to do that. Yes, there are buildings that can be torn down and houses erected. They may not be in the ideal neighborhood, but that's one possibility. A subdivision would be another possibility. As Tom mentioned, planning and zoning has worked on easing the restrictions to building a subdivision in town, which is a start. Rental housing is critically short. We need to find rental housing for people because not everybody wants to buy a house when they first come to town, nor can they afford to buy a house when they first come to town. The law of 198 is very viable. But we also need to perhaps encourage spec homes. If five, if 10 people got together, put in $20,000 and said, here's a spec home, let's start, that would be a great beginning and I would like to encourage that kind of development in the future.
Housing development. Who's going to move into this? We have to have jobs, jobs, jobs for these people to come to town. Right now, we have about 50 homes that are empty. Yes, some of them probably are not habitable. Some of them, people coming to town could rent, buy, or build. But right now, what do we have to offer these people? We don't have a company here that can employ a large amount of people. We need this, but I don't see where a housing development will help us at this time.
Okay, the next question will begin with Tom. Several of you have mentioned the facade project tonight and the city's committed 30% of the project cost up to $150,000. If the facade project ends up costing more than the original estimate, would you be in favor of scaling back the project, committing more public funds to the project or something else?
That would take some considerable thought. The thing that has to be brought into consideration is the amount of the project and the fiscal solvency of the city at the time and the availability of the funds to continue that project. I feel that our downtown area needs updated. I think that it would be very much more attractive, but it would really have to be considered. Many things we have to take into consideration before any money could be allotted for that. It's not that I'm for or I'm against it, it's a case of fiscal solvency. If the money is there and the project is worthwhile, I'd be up for it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you, it was a little lengthy, can you answer or repeat it, please?
Yeah, the question in general. If the facade project ends up costing more than the original estimate, would you be in favor of scaling back the project or committing more public funds to the project?
Well, I was part of the original committee that wrote for that facade grant and I know that there are certain limitations of what we can do to modify it. It is true that we have $500,000 coming to with matching funds, making it a million-dollar project theoretically. The responsibility is placed not only on the city, but also on the business owners. It is, they have committed to doing 20% of the project with their own funds, 30% from the community and the other 50% is from the facade grant itself. If the business owners receive estimates that are beyond their consideration for what they want to do for their buildings, they have every opportunity to scale it back to what is feasible for them. Do I think that the community can allocate additional funds for that? Yes, I do think that within this community, there are funds, but I am not saying that I am asking for them. I'm just saying they're available. I think it's critical to Sac City that we improve our downtown. Thank you.
As I understand the facade grant, from what you said, the city's committed $150,000, up to $150,000, the property owner's $100,000, and that would be $250,000 that is coming in of the grant, so we know just kind of what we're talking about. I think the facade program is a wonderful opportunity for us to update our downtown business district. I would be open to considering more money for it, but I think there would have to be some kind of compromise there too, where other property owners in town are getting some considerations in terms of infrastructure or things happening in conjunction with it rather than focusing solely on the central business district as our area of improvement. It would of course be possible for the individual property owners to scale back what they wanted. And it would depend a bit on what the banks were willing to lend to the property owners for their portion of the $100,000 that needs to be here. If all funding were intact and the money were available, I would be open to consideration. But I certainly would want to make sure that there were other considerations so that everybody in town was receiving some benefit also toward their private property and not just the central business district.
I would be open to scaling back the money for the facade program. I think that we do need a viable retail downtown business, but we also have businesses on both hedges of town. As far as contributing more money for it, no, I would not be in favor of that. I would be in favor of using that money to attract a company to come to town that would have some, say, up to a dozen people that would make Sac City home.
Our facade grant actually was written so that there would be a percentage from the state, a percentage from the business owners, and also the contribution from the city. We also went out to our financial institutions and were able to raise $100,000 per bank at a low percent interest for these people to be able to make the repairs on their buildings. I can tell you, by going to the communities where these facade improvements have been invested, and you should also know that our oldest building downtown is 127 years old, in case you didn't know that, our buildings are in bad shape too. It's important to all of the communities in the surrounding area, our assessed valuation as a whole, and certainly the viability of our commercial district, to do something such as this facade improvement. We were blessed and congratulated and patted on the back a number of times in the last couple of days, as Main Street was here, congratulating us that we were able to receive this facade improvement grant. This is probably one of the biggest things that's happened in downtown Sac City in decades, well, and maybe centuries, I don't know. I have my own piece of commercial property that is not in the central business district. I know that there is tax abatement available to me if I add improvements to my building up to 20% of the assessed valuation, so that our program's out there for some of us. It's too bad we can't all be in the central business district. Trust me, if I could have written my building in this grant, I would have done that as well. Thank you.
All right, moving to the next question. We'll start with Denise. Do you think that the city should continue to support entities like Kids World and the Community Center with money earned by the gas utility?
Yes, because without Kids World, the young individuals that have young families would not be able to do the jobs within our community and our surrounding areas, whether it's at Vantop or Evaco, or downtown at the drugstore, or even at my business. It is unfortunate that this has to be subsidized by a community, but also these are funds that we are fortunate that we have to be able to keep those viable and available to our community. I'm campaigning on a new attitude, and part of that is the cost of belonging to the rec center in Sac City for a year is about equal to what I used to pay for in two months in Des Moines. So, is there a possibility that we can find other ways to finance it, maybe by an increase of membership, attendance, or by a cost increase, and still keep it viable for the community and accessible for the people that live there?
One of the things Sac City needs to do is find what its strengths are. Kids World and the Community Center are part of the strengths in town. It's important that we have places to play, places to take our children. The 1961 charter for the gas company indicated that the profits that were there should be dispersed into community endeavors. So, it's certainly keeping with what the people actually voted, I believe it was 1957 when they voted for the gas company to be formed by the city. So, in that regard, it is very much in keeping with what the mission of the gas company was. Would I like to see the two entities being more self-supporting? You bet. I think we need to work to make them operate as efficiently as possible, increase the clientele for them, and perhaps increase the rates a little bit if we could. I tend to be an optimist. I look in the glass, it's half-empty, and I rejoice in the water that's there, and I try to find ways that I can get more water to fill it up. And I think that's what we need to do with Kids World and the Community Center. They're wonderful things. It would be nice not to have to support them, but I don't want to pull at all these points and kill them either.
Yes, I think we should support Kids World. If you, they should, it would be nice if Kids World and the rec center were self-sufficient, but at this time, it doesn't look like they are able to be that. If you increase the cost at Kids World, you will lose families because they simply can't afford it. The rec center, same thing. You increase the cost and you will lose members. Maybe if you keep the cost the same and you gain a few members, okay, then you've made an income and you have not, not lost anything. So, yes, I believe we should support them. It would be great if these two, Kids World and the rec center, could be self-sufficient, but, you know, for these things, you know, you just, you can't.
Yes, I agree with all of the above. As most of you know, I was a strong supporter of Kids World, I worked six and a half years for that, and certainly without Kids World, we'd be missing about 80 to 85 parents working in our area. Trust me, we can't afford to be without those jobs. I also know that it'd be really nice if it was self-supporting, however, it's not, and I don't foresee that in the future, the same way with the Community Center. We started that in 1993 when we were trying to entice the new, young doctors to our area. Those are the kind of amenities that do bring young families to our area, and certainly the kind of amenities that we need to keep here in Sac City. This is absolutely right, that was the mission of the gas company at the time, and certainly is the mission of every other municipally-owned utility in the state. You can go to any other community, whether it be their electric company, gas company, whatever, that's the same way that they subsidize the amenities in their communities, and I think we need to continue to do so.
Kids World and the rec center, yes, I would support the continuation of it. When people, we're talking about trying to get people moving into Sac City, what are two of the things that they look for? Recreation and childcare. If you have neither one of those, it's going to be indelible to you. Part of our recreation, even if it isn't all completely subsidized by the Sac City Aquatic Center, we have the golf course, we have a lot of amenities and a lot of good things going in. Maintain the support for those two, I think is very important to the future of Sac City.
Okay, our last question, and I'll meet it, congratulations. This question's going to begin with Bruce. What ideas do you have to create opportunities that will attract young professionals back to Sac City?
Attracting young professionals is never easy. We've got to have amenities in place for them to have childcare, place to play. We have to have places for them to live. Depending on the professionals, if you're talking about doctors, lawyers, some of those kind of things, our housing that is available for, in the $100,000 to $150,000 range, there aren't many places available for sale right now. We need to be able to have a place for them to live, a place for them to work, and we need to embrace them as a community and welcome them. We need to show that we like each other, and that this is a place that they would want to come and be. It would be nice if there were more places for them to shop, but Sac City in the foreseeable future may not be a place where we will be able to buy everything we need. Nevertheless, we need to maintain what we have, build on the assets we have as we're planning for the future, and sell this vision to the young professionals that we are talking to, and convince them they can come down the ground floor if something is going to be wonderful for decades to come.
Sac City has a number of items that would attract young people. We have a number of churches, we have Kids World, we have the rec center, we have the conservation center south of town. These are all things that young people would look for in a community. Not every age group is going to need these items, but they are available. Kids World, young families are going to need childcare. So, from that standpoint, I think that we have a lot to offer, but one of the things, yes, we do need to do, is we need to do a better job of working together.
When I think about young professionals coming to the area, I think about the things that they want in their life, specifically recreation. And we have some great recreation in the area, whether it be the Stock Rail Trail, certainly the biking around town, we have the lake, we have the river, that offers opportunities for fishing, we have hunting, we have all kinds of things that people can do. But in the same token, they want to attract downtown. They also want connectivity. A discussion up here before this forum started was about our internet services in our community and how we can make them better. So, they need to be connected, and we certainly do too. It's easy to work out of your home if you have an internet connection, cellphone, whatever, so those are some of the things we need to look at. Housing is another important thing. We need to be able to offer them, of course, childcare and the rec center, the aquatic center, and all the various other forms of activities out there. But we certainly need to be open to the young people as they come back here, and they want to transition into our businesses. Some of our older businesses, if they could take a younger person and groom them to take over that business, it'd be so much easier for them to find a place. We also need to treat them differently than what they've been treated in the past. So, young people are our future, and without all of the amenities that we currently have, we won't be able to attract them.
Well, it seems that everyone's going to agree that we need the amenities to draw people to town. The biggest thing we need is jobs for the young professionals. One of the advantages that I can see that we may have, specialty doctors, surgeons, what have you, generally fly into Sac City to perform surgeries and what have you here. There should be a possibility that we could actually reverse that, get them to move into Sac City and fly somewhere else to take care of their particular needs and maintain the young professionals here in Sac City. We have the amenities, we have pretty much all the shopping that you normally need to survive, buy all your appliances, anything you need. If we just could get people to come in and have employment, even if it's going out from Sac City rather than coming in, they would be a very viable piece of the public here in Sac City, and I think it would be a very good thing to have. Thank you.
I actually asked young professionals and young people what they need, and that's the new approach or new attitude that I'd like to bring to the council, and here's their answers. Internet and wireless accessibility, accessibility to airports within driving distance, we have those. Accessibility to interstates, recreational biking and hiking paths, and lakes, we have those. Personal trainers in the health center, we have that. Starbucks, yes, we do. Cultural opportunities, social spaces for their dogs, that took me a minute, that's a dog park. They also need apartments, condos, townhouses, rental spaces that they can afford, they do not graduate with housing, furniture, lawn mowers, snow blowers, but they, and they have no desire to purchase them. I've noticed that they're looking for affordable housing, but again, it is not a three-bedroom house with a white picket fence. They need affordable housing that allows them to pay down college debt, do their jobs, and communicate, or commute and communicate with their parent corporations. The young people in Sac City want housing where they don't have to live with mom and dad.
Okay, now each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement to either reiterate one of their positions tonight, to talk a little bit more about their qualifications, or really just to address any issue that they feel needs more attention. We'll begin with Susan.
I have owned and operated greenhouse, photo shop, gift shop, and two other gift shops. I have a degree from the American Floral Art School in Chicago, and I have a business administration degree from Bellevue University. I worked for the University of Nebraska at Omaha. I have experience working with a group of people. A group of individuals trying to reach a decision find that they have a difference of opinion. A give and take on each side can find a solution for this problem. The future for Sac City will present a lot of challenges. How do we attract new business? I think that bringing in a company that would take employing 12 people would benefit everyone. New workers would buy, rent, or build a new home. I feel a council member needs to listen and address the concerns of the citizens. I will do research on anything that comes before the council so I can make a knowledgeable decision for the benefit of all citizens. Thank you for your consideration on November the 5th.
One of the things that we need to do in Sac City is be positive or positive, and start ourselves apart as a community where people do want to come to. We need to establish goals and reach those things. We need to work on this branding and marketing attitude. Without selling ourselves to the outside world and even internal marketing to ourselves, we're not going to attract other people here. As I said, we need to set ourselves apart so that they actually recognize that we're a community that we're on the move, and we can do that with the improvements to our downtown, certainly with the facade grant, they're going to look like we're an inspiring community, a downtown community. You can take a look at Woodbine or Travel Two Manning as they redo their main streets and stuff like that, and see that people are actually wanting and desiring to live in those communities. We need to stay on top of our education system to make sure that it's top-notch, we need to make sure all those amenities stay in place, and also the attitude of who we are is important. Instead of doing things for yourself, you need to learn to do things for the whole community. So, as I said before, I think it's extremely important that we sell ourselves not only to ourselves, but also the outside world. We need to concentrate on working together to make this community the best place it can possibly be. You're right, we do need maybe some additional jobs, we need to fill the ones that we have, and it scares me to death that baby boomers retiring by the thousands every day, and we need to fill those jobs as well. So, we need to take into consideration what we have, we need to take into consideration what we need, and those people out here that are business owners know how hard it is to find somebody that will actually give a day's work for a day's pay, and we need to make sure that we're out there investigating ways to grow. As I said, with that four-lane highway here, we are now in position to grow, and it's taken 25 years of leadership to get that baby here. Thank you.
Well, I believe that if I'm elected, I have no promises, nothing that I can say I'm going to do that I won't do, but I can assure you that during my working career, everything that I ever accomplished, I worked as hard and diligently as possible, as honestly as possible, and respectfully as possible. And if I'm elected to the city council, I will serve the people of Sac City. I feel that we have a very intelligent community, a lot of good ideas, and a lot of things that have to be considered by the public and by the city council. So, if I'm elected, I guarantee that I will be the most honest and hard-working individual that I have been all my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deciding to move to the community is much like going on an interview for a job. If you go to the interview for a job and your shoes are not polished, very often your employer does not take the time to realize that you have brand-new socks on. And that's sort of like what happens when people come into a community to evaluate whether they're going to move here. So I am adamantly concerned with our current first impression of our downtown. And having co-authored the facade grant, I'm acutely aware that those monies were only available through our membership as a main street chamber. And those funds do have to stay in the downtown area. However, we can reach out to other funds for the businesses that are not within the parameters of what we considered our downtown. We can reach out through our local universities and our community colleges to talk to graduating seniors and find out what they are looking for. And it may not be the same as what it was when we graduated. We have to change our way of thinking, to think like the young professionals that are graduating that could want to live here. Think of us as an incubator for people that are doing internships or learning to be a plumber and having to spend time with a plumber to get that certification or an electrician. We have to think creatively. We cannot think like we have in the past because the past is the past. We're looking towards the future. Thank you.
First of all, I would just like to thank again the young professionals for this opportunity. And thank you all for taking the time to come out. It shows that SAC City is filled with wonderful people who are very concerned about the future of the town. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to premiere a new choral work by a friend of Elizabeth New York. It ends with "To Dare to Dream, to Hope, to Trust, to Aspire, to Imagine That Which Has Never Been Imagined Before." SAC City is at an important crossroads. Robert Frost said, "Two roads diverged in Yellowwood." And sorry, I could not travel both. And be with the traveler, there I stood. We have a choice in the upcoming election. We can be rooted in the problems of the past, or we can take the road that leads to the future that is bright and vibrant. And I guess there's a third choice. We can stand at the crossroads and decide to do nothing. But I would really invite you to close your eyes and dream what you would like to see SAC City like. One of my favorite old photos of SAC City says, "Bustling SAC City Downtown." And it shows people and cars. And there's no place to stand on Main Street. I would be honored to become your voice on the city council that could help implement something like that so that 100 years from now, people will look back at the year 2014 or '15 and say, "Bustling SAC City." That was wonderful. And I'm glad that people could elect leaders who could dream and imagine a wonderful future that we could all build bridges for. Thank you so much for your consideration and your input, Chris.
Let's give a big round of applause to all our candidates. I would again like to thank all of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Just as a reminder, we do have refreshments out in the lobby. You'll be able to greet the candidates a little bit. Tonight's forum will be posted in full to YouTube. A link will be posted on the SAC County Young Professionals Facebook page. So if you don't like it already, go to the Facebook page or the SAC County Young Professionals and like that. Also, when you like the SAC County Young Professionals page, shameless plug, you'll also be kept up to date on all the events that are coming forth. The next one, our next event, will be our, I believe we're on our fourth annual charity poker tournament that will be held in January. I'd like to thank all the candidates again, and the school staff, and all of you, all of the public, for coming out tonight and making tonight possible. Remember to cast your vote on November 5th. Thank you. And also, I guess my early voting is available now.